Chris, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay, it is six o'clock and because it's that, we will call this meeting of the Billings Falls Union High School Board to order. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now it's time for introductions. Mary, you want to start on your end and then we'll go around this way.
Mary Paul Graffin.
June Screeter Westminster.
Jamie Sarah Westminster.
Kim Keith Rockingham.
Ginger Driscoll Rockingham.
Chris Hoxton, I represent Rockingham.
Andy Haas Superintendent.
Molly Bregadier Westminster.
Ben Wallace Rockingham.
Emily Ferentz Athens.
Paul Bohuske Rockingham.
Thank you. Traductions and public comment, do we have any? It was going twice. Sold. We have a few adjustments to the agenda. First of all, seven A, we will strike. We don't have a finance report for this evening. Although we do get a lot of quality at time during the budget meetings. Continuing on, we do not have a social studies appointment, so me too, we can strike. Under old and unfinished business, we have nine F that we're adding, which is to approve recommendations for the bid for any fire alarm system upgrade. And then we're adding a nine G, an executive session for a very brief personal matter. Keep us busy. Item six, review and approve minutes for November tenth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to accept the. What is it?
Minutes.
The minutes of November tenth.
Any discussion about the minutes for November tenth? Hearing none, or we don't have anybody. We have everyone here, don't we?
You can just do our voice.
Nice. All in favor of approving the minutes for November tenth, twenty twenty five as presented, indicate by saying aye.
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 Who's opposed? Any extensions? This will be it. Principals' report. We do have access to the written copy and it looks like we've got Kelly back up.
Yeah, my folks might have heard of it again.
Did folks have a chance to see the written copy?
Kind of different. So was it sent? When was it sent?
Well, it was, it was included in the whole packet and it also at least came to me in a separate document as well. So. I just want to recognize and note that increased somewhat ongoing donation that we get from the Haber Foundation. So if you noticed that, Kelly reported that the Haber Foundation is providing ongoing financial support for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year to the tune of hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for work in financial literacy, which is great. And I think at some point, and I don't know whether it's tonight or not, it's not on for action, but we have to accept that, don't we?
You do, and I think, I think when we get an official letter.
Okay.
That would be the appropriate time, yeah.
Officially accepted.
I think we just found that out within the last couple of day or two.
We have an email, but not a letter.
Yeah.
Perfect. So I don't know if Kelly, if you want to touch on anything else, or if anyone has any questions for Kelly on what she presented in writing.
Sure, I can provide a couple of quick updates. One is, we had a fantastic interview today for that open, long-term social studies position. I am working on reference checks and I hope to circle back by end of day tomorrow with a request for a special meeting to be able to bring this candidate to your consideration more formally. But the team absolutely loved him, which is great. The other thing I would just note, because I think it's pretty significant, is in that packet that was sent out, there are two updates from the Department of Environmental Conservation, specific to PCB remediation in the building. One, and Andy mentioned this earlier, we are in receipt of the formal letter outlining support for a little over two million dollars for us to continue with that planned remediation work. This is specifically going to be addressing the fireproofing paint overspray on the columns throughout the building, including in the gym. So in the packet that was provided, there's a very granular overview of this phase remediation plan that we intend to see start on the twenty-second of December, the close of the public comment period, and is anticipated will run through the end of August. As I've mentioned in prior meetings, Jeff and I have done a lot of work with VHB and DEC to kind of stagger this remediation plan to try and minimize any disruption to building operations. I want to be clear in noting that the bulk of this work, in terms of active remediation, will take place outside of the academic day meeting from three o'clock on. And things that we anticipate will cause some significant disruption will take place over the breaks. For example, there's some remediation work that needs to happen in the kitchen. Obviously cafeteria does a tremendous amount of work when school's in session. So we are going to look to avoid any work in their spaces, for example, when school's in session. So that'll happen over the February break, for example. The other thing to kind of put on your radar, just because it's been a little over a year, I believe. But as part of this work, we will be having building-wide air sampling taking place again December seventeenth through nineteenth. I do not anticipate we'll have the results from that test prior to the new year. But shortly thereafter, we should have an update on how things are looking throughout the building. So just wanted to make sure that those two pieces in particular were on your radar. And both of the formal letters that outlines the financial support for that work were included in the packet.
Kelly, do you want to update the time on the winter concert?
Thank you. Yes. So in that principal's report, the concert itself is this Thursday at seven. But there is an open, there's an art show prior to that, starting at six o'clock. So the team's been working very hard on both of those pieces. So thank you in advance to those who can come. And again, that'll start at six PM. The concert will start at seven PM on Thursday there in the auditorium.
Who's the vice chair here real quick? Are you the vice chair?
Kelly, this is actually a question for Andy that has to do with your report here. You mentioned having a hard time finding a science teacher. I'm curious, Andy, when can we utilize, you know, we voted to join the BOCSIs, the Board of Cooperative Education Services. When can we start to go to them for things like helping us find candidates?
So we can go to them anytime, just so the board is clear. I mean, there is no BOCSIs right now. We in fact just filed the paperwork for it.
Okay.
The last district actually joined, or youth supervisory union, but we're part of the collaborative. And so anytime we do a posting, we actually go to them for any of our postings. We've been doing that this whole year.
Okay.
So anytime we have a posting, we send it to them also because they just have a larger place, so.
That's it. Any other questions since? Okay. Thank you, Kelly. So we are moving on to where were we? Principal's report, okay, new business. The resignation. So do you want to lead that, Andy, so that?
So Roger Brown was hired as a science teacher at the beginning of the year. He submitted his resignation that you have available to you. But I'm just rereading it to make sure I don't say something I shouldn't say that due to personal issues that he needed to go back to his home state of Tennessee.
And we have to accept that.
It's, it's it's good business to accept it, but I mean, he's already left the state, so.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept Robert Brown's.
Roger Brown.
Roger Brown's letter of resignation with regrets.
With regrets. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We appreciate the resignation letter and accept it with regrets. Moving on. Are we appointing? We are appointing a long-term sub.
So this is to replace Mr. Brown. And Kelly can speak much more to it, but Pat Murray, we should all be very much aware of. Pat Murray's fought with us for a bunch of years and just recently retired last year. So, but Kelly, I think you could speak more just to.
Yep. Ms. Murray graciously offered to step in and support the science team and our students to close out the first semester. So she was very much enjoying her retirement and is very eager to return to retirement. But also was, I think was incredibly loving and we're incredibly grateful stepped up when she learned of the need and is willing to serve in that role, again, through the close of the first semester, to allow us some additional time. We do have the larger position posted. We're very much seeking someone with a chemistry background in particular. So we're very grateful again of her offer and it allows us a little bit more time to try and find the right candidate for second semester. So the, do you want to speak to the specific contract pieces, Andy?
So Pat Murray, she's a master, step eighteen, and then we prorate that based on, we figured out the number of days she'd be working for us. And so we just prorate that out for that.
That answered my question.
Is there a motion?
That we have not had a motion yet, Chris.
So I would invite a motion to approve Pat Murray.
Pat Murray.
Pat Murray, I'm sorry.
Patricia.
For the long-term science position. And what was the rate that we were?
Now, step eighteen.
There you go.
Through the end of the first semester.
So.
Don't move.
Any more conversation, discussion?
God bless her.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? And any extensions? CTE funding informational.
So I think a couple of board members had asked about that at a previous meeting. Essentially what happens with the CTE is that the the money is generated based on the number of students that were sitting up there and added and mentioned in the finance or the budget meeting that the state ends up paying about eighty-seven percent. But it's basically what's known as a pass-through funding. So the the money never comes into us, but we have to show it as a revenue coming in and then we have to show it as an expenditure going out. But we never see the money.
CTE.
Career Center.
Career Center.
Career Technical Education. So, so essentially, we show the dollars coming in and we show the dollars going out, but we never touch the dollars. And, and so depending on how many kids go or whatever, and that eighty-seven percent, so then we're going to end up getting a bill for that leftover thirteen percent that we then have to pay, so. But that's why it's called a pass-through, because you show it in your budget as a revenue and then as an expenditure. I cannot remember who asked, but I don't know if that picks what that is a full explanation.
Anything, any questions for Andy on that? Facility use form informational.
So that was brought up at a, at a previous meeting as well. So we did a little bit of research in there. You know, obviously we currently have our facility use form. Spoken with our legal representation, looked at some others. We're in the process of revising ours. It would really either be in effect, go into effect in January or beginning of next year for an SU-wide facility use form. But essentially, there is the opportunity that we can look at some kind of a tiered structure for payment. And so that if, if it's like our in-house folks, someone from within the SU, right, then there, there's no cost to it. If it's something that is going to benefit our community, so it's like a local Parks Place wants to use something, that's a, you know, then there's a no cost for that because they're non-public or non-private. But then there is some other fee pieces that you have to put in place that if it's a, if it's a private entity and type of thing. But you, the difference is you can't say like, well, I like the New Hampshire Dance Institute, so we're going to waive the fees for them. But I, but we're going to charge the, the car show, right? You, you can't, you can't like, that's where you can't start to differentiate. So once we put a, we're going to put a form in place, there is a policy that says, the board says, the superintendent will create a form, and so that's what we're, we're working on. But we do, I mean, there is a current form that is used in, in here, so.
That was incorrect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Just to come back to the, to the CTE funding, I just have one question. The line item that's in the, in this budget, does that only represent thirteen percent of the cost?
No, it's eighty-seven percent.
That's eighty-seven.
All good. Okay, on to old unfinished business. Nine A, capital improvement projects.
So I guess a point of question on my end is whether, and I can speak to either, the intent with this was to speak to the specific facilities requests that we have, that we are asking to take off of next year's budget request and to spend down surplus for this year? Or is it wanting to revisit some of the larger items that are floating out there in that larger capital request?
Well.
Or both.
I haven't had a chance to have participated in the agenda setting. What I really think is maybe in an ongoing way, sort of an update on where we stand on the projects that we have previously discussed. Did there are any updates for that?
And approved.
And approved, yeah. There was the buildings and grounds walk around, for example, where we talked about a number of things. So there's a lot of different ways that we can take that. And then, so whatever you might have available for updating, we would welcome. And if not, we can be more specific in the future.
Yeah, I would just say in between those, the last meeting and this one, I did reach out to our PCB consultant, Chris, down in New Jersey to ask for an updated copy of that cost analysis for the repairs versus replacement to include things like the gym and stage. So I will send that along as soon as we have that back in hand. I think, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. We'll start conversations.
Okay, that's okay. I think the most pressing need, without getting into too much detail, again, I'm just being mindful of the safety implications of this, is on that request to draw down on surplus and to reduce next year's requests. There were some very specific requests around door replacement and adding those keyless fob entries. And I would say for a couple of reasons, that's taken on a little bit more urgency. So I know Jeff has been working with Green Mountain Security. We've had them on site to address some needs and to get us some more timely estimate on what it would cost to get that work done, ideally before the new year. So that has been a priority. I would say the other things like the tree work, the softball irrigation, a number of things that were identified on that board walkthrough are on the list for follow-up this year on that surplus spending proposal. So I think I'll just stop there. That's it for now. We're still in a little bit of a holding pattern. I don't know if I missed, I apologize, I missed the last four or five minutes of the budget committee, if there was an update provided on our ability to proceed with spending or not.
I would say that there was no particular motion passed relative to that, but I think that the budget committee's expectation was that he would encourage and empower you to move forward with whatever facilities projects can be addressed this year, recognizing that that may call for some spending out of an anticipated surplus for this current budget that we're in. And if there isn't enough for that, that would be drawn, the additional would be drawn from the, from the capital reserve fund. So yes, two things. Yes.
And so for me, Kelly, what would be really nice too, just like you mentioned, the doors and the, and the entry, just kind of bring to the board, hey, look, we're looking at this item, this item, and this item. We have two bids on this. You know, we're in the process of getting specs written for this and, and maybe every meeting, as, as we start knocking some of these off, just so that the board stays informed of what are the projects and, and what's it look like?
Sounds good. And then also, I would then encourage the board, in addition to what Paul just said, if there is something in particular that is near and dear to you, when I put out the, what do you want to see on the agenda? And we've done that before.
Yes.
You know, just say, hey, I haven't heard a lot about this project lately. How's it going, sort of thing? That way, you're not necessarily left wide open with the capital projects. Start talking. Yes, Mary?
Thanks, Chris. Kelly, regarding the stage and what's required, we can get an estimate, but in your experience, when would be the right time to do that project? Could we, maybe you could come to us with that information as well, how long it might take and, and when is the best time of year to do that work? Thanks. The expense.
Yep, no problem.
Anything else on capital movement projects? Budget committee update. Paul, you want to come with that?
Sure. So we're real close on coming back to the board with full budget. And we, we talked really three major things tonight. We're looking right now at a budget that's going to be very close to about eight and a half million dollars. It's going to be up about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars or seven point two-three percent. We're waiting for a couple of numbers. Basically, the pass-through number on VOTEC is one of the major things that we're waiting for. At last year's annual meeting, we set aside for tax relief two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars that we will be using in the FY twenty-seven budget, or at least that's what the budget committee has passed. And, and we also learned that the high school is going out of the FY twenty-five budget is going to have a surplus of about seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seventy-five dollars, of which the committee voted tonight to put five hundred thousand of that aside for tax relief in the future and to move two hundred and fifteen thousand, seventy-five dollars into capital expense. Overall, the, a couple of real items that have moved up a real lot and take up about four and a half percent of our increase is the supervised reunion budget. And that's all based upon the high school assuming part of the pre-K costs as well as the new formula that we're going to be using to determine what each school pays. And debt service, obviously with the roof and the driveway is up. So that, so out of the.
And special ed.
And, and, and special ed's up almost a million dollars at the supervised reunion. So that, that's why that part of the budget's up quite a bit. And then again, debt service. So we're really, we're looking at about, out of the seven point two-five, about four percent of that is, is already, was already taken by supervised reunion and debt service.
Sounds good. Any questions? I know a lot of us were here for that meeting already, so.
And as soon as we get those numbers, we'll be back to the board with warning as well as voting for the budget and then signing off on the war, warning for annual meeting as well as voting top meeting day.
We're very hopeful that we will also have some solid tax information when it comes time to promote support for the budget. And again, I just want to emphasize, a budget that's up for seven point two percent does not necessarily mean everyone's taxes is going up as a result of that, because there's a revenue side of it too. And we've tackled some of that with the two hundred and nineteen thousand that we are introducing into that for tax relief. So let's hope that we have good news on the taxes, even though it's, the budget is up much higher than we initially had hoped for. All right, PCB update.
Yeah, just to kind of reiterate, from the principal's report, we are proceeding with air sampling, December seventeenth through nineteenth. VHB, our PCB consultants, will be back on site to deploy air monitoring throughout the building. And we expect to have those test results back after the new year to give us a sense on how we're doing with our remediation work. And again, at the close of the public comment period, which I think goes through the nineteenth of December, assuming nothing comes in that would radically alter the vision, remediation work will begin on Monday, December twenty-second and last through next summer. So we are eager to get this next phase going and again, working real hard to minimize operational disruptions throughout the building. But we're grateful for the state's support in doing this next phase of work. That's it on my end. That's it on my end.
Great, thank you, Kelly, Act one seventy three and title update.
Uh so this was an ask, I guess, uh I um I just wanna clarify, um is it? Was the ask for one seventy three or for seventy three?
I was asking to hear about the title. Title loss and what you're anticipating, you've been talking about it for a few months.
So I have nothing, I have no new news.
No, when you might hopefully hear about that?
Uh we don't hear about our title funding until May.
May, wow, okay.
So um but, you know, uh uh just to reiterate, I mean. This is uh federal administration has tried to pull Title Two and Title Four funding. Um already this current year that they left it in place. Um we do not know if um they will continue to move forward with the idea that they don't uh feel that that's something they wanna support. Um so it could be, I I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. Um but a significant impact to us, um we, I mean, we have some dollars from carryover that we would be able to use, but um. Because that's money we've already received, um essentially, but we take Title Two and Title Four dollars and move them into Title One. So you're allowed to move Title Two and Title Four dollars into Title One, that helps um offset the costs in Title One. Um we carry an enormous amount of salaries in our title grants, um and so. Um with those salaries, those are our academic and for the most part academic interventionists who work with our um. Students uh to um try and do an intervention so that they don't end up in the special education. I mean, that's part of the the work you're trying to do, um and so it's really important work. Um it's also funds uh some of our positions, which are um our home to school liaison. And our restorative practice um coordinator. Again, those are two uh significant um positions in. Engagement and outreach to our families and to our students to engage them, because as we know, if students aren't coming to school. They're not then moving forward, they tend to be at higher risk for falling behind and having um. Significant learning issues, which then leads them to special education, so it's all designed to try and control that. So we won't know about that until probably May, so.
For the slower people in the group, could you please clarify Title One?
Sure, no, let me say, great, thank you, no, thank you, because I I forget to channel my inner David Clark sometimes. So the title funds are also known as consolidated federal grants. So those are um they were put in place back in the fifties and they are to support low income. Families and students who are identified as low income, the formula changes on how you identify kids. Um but essentially, they are designed for um extra support for students. Who are identified as need, and we are a. We're at the district wide level, essentially, so we're not targeted schools, so sometimes I've worked in schools where like. Only one of your, all your schools meets the threshold, so you can only spend dollars in that. That school, so Title One is really around that academic intervention for those students. And there are specific guidelines that we have to follow, so we cannot like just decide to spend money on anything. We we have to tell them ahead of time what we're spending it on. Um we also have to spend some of that money uh at Kern Hatton because of their designation. Uh and then we we do a little, we have to outreach to Vermont Academy, you know, and some other schools that. They they always say thank you, no thank you, so um but that's what we have to do with Title One. Title Two and Title Four, and I always get them backwards, they're always, one of them is for um professional development. And the other one is for um health and safe schools. And so uh the professional development is around improving uh teacher instructional practices. Um and then uh health uh safe and healthy schools um has to do with, again, a myriad of things, but. Um we can use those dollars um for things like family engagement, but it's also improving. Our schools and in uh the health of our students.
Thank you.
And there's Title Three too, that's that's, um well, just I I now that I think about it, I might as well say. Title Three is for English language learners, and we just don't have enough students to. Um qualify for any of those dollars.
And you said Title One was academic intervention?
For the most part, that's like the better way to kind of think about it, but I can send you some real specifics around it. And anyone else who, I'll just send it out to all the board. Because there there's, like I say, there are very narrow lines that of how we can use dollars.
And what was Title Three again?
Uh English language learners.
Anything else for Andy under items, item ninety?
So is there an update on um, well, I'm gonna go for seventy three, Act seventy three.
I have no new news other than um, you know, the task force um. Which I'm sure everyone's, I I shouldn't say I'm sure everyone's right, but the task force. Was tasked with coming up with maps to then present to the legislature. Um they uh took a different route, they did draw some maps uh that had to do with Bozies. Or 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 uh Cooperative Boards of Education. Um and they uh then um went further to discuss. Some governance around that and to um strongly suggest that. Regional high schools be considered, but that be um basically a carrot. That if districts decided to join together to form regional high schools, that there might be some uh construction aid um available to them. They also, through the Bozies, encouraged um districts to think about where um. Consolidating would be good for them, um as opposed to the forced mergers from like Act forty six days. And so that's kind of where that is, uh the governor has labeled it a failure. Um and it will, but it'll go up to the legislature when they, when do they, I don't know when they go into session, but. It will go to their committees, respective committees, and they'll, it'll move through at that point, so. That's the 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 only piece, you know, the only other thing that I I keep on my radar is uh. In Act seventy three, once uh they vote on um. District lines would be a foundation formula or a foundational formula, and that um. One of my concerns is will they uh make a decision to forget about seventy three and just push forward with us with a new, you know. A new legislative uh bill to put in a foundation formula, which would then. Potentially cap any dollars that we receive um for F Y twenty nine.
So um this wouldn't start, wouldn't take effect until twenty twenty nine? Is that what's anticipated?
Under Act seventy three, the uh we were. There would, if everything had gone through the way they expected it to do it and how it was written in the law. At uh F Y twenty eight would be the last budget build that we would do in our normal sense that we would take the. That budget to the taxpayers to be voted on, and so for F Y twenty nine, we would be told how many dollars we were getting. And then we'd have an opportunity to uh increase that by ten percent, and that ten percent would be what the voters would vote. And then in future years, that ten percent goes down to nine percent and then eight percent and then.
Anything else for Andy on that? Thank you. Send first tax letter.
Uh that's the, that came out, um I will say that tomorrow there is uh B S B A is hosting a um. Webinar on it, and that's on my calendar, it's all, so. Is that um uh just explaining the tax letter, and that is at. Um twelve o'clock, so I would encourage if people are available, um. It's making sense with December one letter, what school boards need to know. So if you need a link, I can send it to you, if you didn't sign up for it, you're supposed to have signed up for it, but. I'll send you my link.
Anything for Andy on that?
Okay, I guess I do have one question of that. Me reading that letter, what is the significant aspects of that that letter from your perspective?
Well, I so I think every year um they're they're gonna. Try and um do some shock and awe, um and so I think there's a lot of shock and awe in there, on the twelve percent, it's all based on estimates, so. I mean, you know, if. I would say of of the four budgets that we build, um three of them are pretty low right now, if not under. So one of our, one of our, one of our districts is coming in under, so they'll have a negative percentage increase. One of our districts is almost flat, and then one of our districts is looking at a um a slight increase, so like a two percent increase. And then you all have got a little bit bigger of an increase, so that that said, so we're running that gamut. But, well, my my point is, if every. You know, every school district in in the state of Vermont is doing that and not coming in with ten, you know, double-digit percent increases, which is what they've been doing. Then that twelve percent won't be as big as it is. So it's a, it's an estimate based on past spending, but there's also. Last year, they used dollars to buy down the the Ed Fund. Which then put in, you know, so half of that twelve percent increase is making up for that what they did last year. So they used tax relief and they did a one-time buy down, so that's why you're. That's where, so there is money, they could do another buy down this year, that is my understanding. So that twelve percent could get down to six percent, and then if all the districts don't. Really spend as much as they anticipate they will or or ask for as much, then that would even put. It would drive it a little more down. But the C, you know, C L A and yields all have to play in there too. Now, when I don't fully understand.
Thank you, anything else for Andy on that topic? Um approve, approve recommendation for the fire alarm system upgrade bid.
So I literally got this today, so um this would be something that if you were to consider this and take a vote on it. Then at our next meeting, we would probably ask you to ratify that decision, so, but um it would allow us to the ball moving. So Steve Horton, who has worked as our owner's rep for many of our projects. Um was reviewing the bids, we received two bids, one was from uh Hamlet. Um and the other one was from Cleveland Electrical. Um and Steve, um he does his research and looks into each company, looks at their bids and uh what they're um. What they're asking for and um his recommendation was to award it to Hamlet. Um they were the low bidder um on the two systems between the two bids. But also uh Hamlet, as he noted in the email I sent you, uh they were the electricians for the entire science wing. Um so they know our system very well, uh so he believes it'll be integrated um. A lot better than having another company coming in. Um interestingly, Countryside, who does do our alarm system, didn't even bid on this, right? So um.
So it looks like the bid we would be approving is for two hundred fifty nine thousand six hundred thirty two dollars. As that thing is broken out at the bottom there, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
For um Hamlet, um any run, any recollection what we anticipated that to be?
I wanna say we thought it was gonna be about two twenty five-ish, so a little over what we thought it was gonna be.
But we do still have facility for um reserve fund money that will be able to cover.
Yes, plenty of it.
So I am looking for a motion to approve um Hamlet Electric. Prove their bid for um the upgrading to our fire alarm system. Um in the amount of two hundred fifty nine thousand six hundred thirty two dollars.
So move.
Any discussion?
I I have one question, the the second bid, it looked like there was two figures that where they had, they had quoted. One amount that was that was less than the Hamlet bid and another amount that was that was slightly more.
Were those from the other schools?
Is there a different scope of work?
Well, there's. There was an alternate system that was two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty thousand is what I'm looking at there.
Right, and then. I don't know what the um the original, the price of the according to second plan. Um because that would have been lower. That would have been lower, but what we're, what we went out to bid for was the 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 two hundred and sixty thousand dollar one.
I see.
So um and if we wanted to go further, I would ask for an executive session. Can't say, but more in public.
So is there any more discussion under the motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstention? And that now brings us to um an executive session personnel matter. And I don't quite have the terminology down on that, so you want?
All does.
All right.
By night make motion, we go into executive session for personnel uh matter where pre. With your knowledge, we put the board at risk and invite the superintendent and. The principal uh into that executive session.
So is a motion for us to go into executive sessions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Yay.
Give me one.
Are we moving our butts or?
No, we're gonna, we can stay right here, but I just need to put people. In waiting rooms, and then I need to.